Good evening and welcome to this special Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, March 1st, 2020, and it is 5:02 PM. We are meeting via Zoom this evening pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04 and Emergency Order 12, Section 3. I just mentioned right before we got on the air that our clerk is running a little bit late this evening. She works until 4:30 at the hospital, so sometimes 4:30 doesn't mean 4:30, but she'll be along presently. In the meantime, Mr. Guarino, do you mind taking role for us?
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you so much.
I may not get this in the correct order, but I'm going to try. Okay, Ms. Bishop is not here yet. Ms. Brown?
Present.
Heather Raymond?
I'm here, thank you.
Sharon Gilio?
Here.
Dottie Oden?
Here.
Sandra Zee?
Here.
Paula Johnson?
Present.
Raymond Guarino is here. Gloria Timmons?
Here.
So we have a quorum, we have eight present.
Thank you, Mr. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, we also have Dr. McKinney and Ms. O'Gara, Ms. Hines, Ms. Gingras, Mr. Parker, Mr. Andrade, and Ms. Kinsella. Did I miss anyone? That's everyone. Oh, Mr. Donovan, I missed Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino, and welcome to everybody. Thank you for coming out this evening. I know we originally did not have meetings scheduled for this week except for budget on Wednesday, but Dr. McKinney called me last week to let me know that some of our teams have made the playoffs, which is exciting news. And Lisa has some questions for us regarding visitors at playoff games, I believe. So take it away, Ms. Gingras.
Thank you very much. I'm hoping not to take too much of your time of your meeting this evening. Thank you for all being here tonight to talk about this. In your packets this week, there is a memo regarding the ability to host visiting fans at our playoff games. I had had an extensive conversation with Director Bobby Bagley about allowing visiting fans and her team and had conversations with public health. And I just want to make it clear from the onset that by fans or spectators at all times, am I referring to immediate family members, parents of the players? So it's not just open the door and the first 50 people in the door get in. Each member of each team, all season long, what we've been doing is our home teams, each member of the team gets two tickets to bring home to their parents. They come in, they give us their name and telephone number and sit socially distanced with masks on well far away from the basketball court during the game. So a basketball team will have anywhere from 12 to 15 players on it. So there's been about 30 people in the gym. What we are looking at for playoffs, playoffs for those of you who may not be wholly familiar with sports and playoff structures and playoff structures, once you hit playoffs, if you lose, your season is over. So for one of the two teams, it will be the last game of their season. And as you can imagine, for a lot of seniors, that's very emotional, and for their parents, it's even more emotional. So when we approved everything for winter sports, we had said no visiting fans, but now we're getting into the playoff season and we have an opportunity to host games. So in the memo, we're looking, South has the opportunity to, excuse me, South girls' basketball have an opportunity to host tomorrow. North boys have an opportunity to host on Thursday and then again on Saturday. And there's been a change, the Friday game with North girls' basketball would not be in our gym. It was originally scheduled in Keene, but they also had the same rule, no visiting fans, but they have since changed that. So our girls will be traveling to Keene on Friday. So we're looking to allow two visiting parent, two parents per student of the visiting team in addition to our home team into our gym so that our kids have the opportunity to play this game in their own gym. If we are not allowed to have visiting fans, the two teams would play in front of both sets of fans just in the other team's gym. So our students are going to be in an environment with the exact same number of people. It would just be someplace else. So I'm hoping that you'll allow us and kind of adjust what we had decided in November, or I should say you decided in November, to allow our students to play in our gym where we have a lot more control over the protocols and where people are sitting and wearing their masks and things like that. So this is just for the next couple of weeks. And I know next week I come back to talk to you about spring sports.
Thank you, Ms. Gingras. I looked up this afternoon on the, well, five minutes ago before our meeting, on the COVID dashboard what the numbers are for today. And in Nashua, the new cases per 100,000 is 295, which puts us in the red, but it's significantly lower than it has been. It's been going down. In January, it was in like the 900s. It's been in the 300s, 400s. So I'm seeing a downward trend there. And then the seven-day positivity rate for Nashua is 5.1%. Last time we met to approve hybrid, it was 8%. So that's in the green and it continues in the green. And our hospitalization rate is, they're not even posting it anymore because hospitalizations are so low. So that's all of the COVID data that I have for people as we make this decision. But I think what I'm looking for is a motion to allow two immediate family members per rostered player for each team for the winter sports playoffs. And then we can have discussion if we have a motion. Oh, my goodness. Okay, so moved by, the order I saw here. So moved by Ms. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Gilio, and seconded again by Ms. Zee.
Mrs. Raymond, may I just add one more thing?
Yes.
It is in the memo, but for everybody watching, we, by "we," I mean Dr. McKinney and myself, we each had independent conversations with Director Bagley, and she does feel that we have the appropriate protocols in place to do this safely.
And to be clear, this does not rescind any previous requirements. So we're just allowing two immediate family members per rostered player for each team, but we still require masks and social distancing, as is the city ordinance here in Nashua. Okay, so I just want to write that down. Any discussion? No one has anything to say. All right, well then. It's shocking. Mr. Guarino, do you mind calling the roll?
Sure. Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Sandra Zee?
Yes.
Yes.
Raymond Guarino votes yes. Gloria Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gingras, and congratulations to all of our student athletes who are competing this week. This is great that you've made it to the playoffs and I hope you play well and that you win. So best of luck.
Great, thank you. I'll see y'all next week.
Thank you, Ms. Gingras. Okay. So that was the quick part of our meeting. The second part of our meeting is the discussion from the Superintendent Search Ad Hoc Committee regarding contract and moving forward with scheduling with BPW and Associates. I believe we need a non-public with Mr. Clausen to go over the contract details.
I'll make the motion if you have the number, the RSA.
Yes, the RSA is, I think contract negotiations is.
RSA 91A32E.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Timmons.
So moved.
Okay, so Ms. Zee makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Timmons. Okay. Mr. Guarino, can we please have the roll?
Okay, on the motion to go into non-public?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Brown.
We plan on coming back out of non-public after we discuss the contract for the remainder of the meeting, correct? To do the?
Yes.
Presentation, okay.
Yeah, but the negotiation portion of the discussion is exempt from the right to no loss. So we'll do that in non-public.
I just wanted to make sure.
We'll come back out. The goal was to go to non-public at 5:15 and come out at 5:45. So that's my fingers-crossed ideal scenario. Okay, Mr. Guarino?
Okay, on the motion, Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Sandra Zee?
Yes.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Raymond Guarino votes yes. Gloria Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero at 5:15 PM.
Great, thank you so much. And please let the record show that Ms. Bishop has joined us as of 5:13. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for your patience. It is 6:14 PM and we are back in public session after our non-public. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to seal the minutes under RSA 91A32E. Okay, motion by Ms. Johnson? Seconded by Ms. Gilio?
On the motion to seal the minutes, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zee? And Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. So the next item on our agenda is to meet with BPW and Associates. So I'm going to hand that over to Ms. Brown, who is the Chair of the Superintendent Search Committee, Ad Hoc Committee, and then Ms. Kinsella to invite, is it Dr. Hill this evening?
Dr. Hill in the waiting room, yes.
Okay, great. So as soon as you're able to have Dr. Hill join us, I would appreciate it. Good evening, Dr. Hill.
Good evening.
Welcome. Thank you for your patience. Have you met the board yet?
No. I'm not sure, I don't think so.
So before I hand it over to Ms. Brown, I'll have everybody introduce themselves. Jen, why don't you just go in voting order?
Also waiting for Kathleen.
Oh, okay. Then I'll wait one second.
Yeah, Dr. Hill, I actually just sent her an email. I think she was in our waiting room and maybe got bumped out. So we just sent her another message. She might need to come back.
Let her know that we were on.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, do we want to wait for her or do we want to go ahead with introductions?
We probably should wait for her and then so that everybody gets a chance to see everybody.
That makes sense. So apologize for the technical difficulties.
I understand.
We think we'd be good at this after almost a year of it.
You think, but you know I've decided that technology is wonderful when it works.
And when it doesn't, oh.
I was working with the group a little bit earlier and I'm not at home and I'm on my iPad and I needed to share a document. Well, I didn't know that you couldn't share from the iPad. At least I haven't figured out how to do it yet. So it was, it was, he had to punt. It was, you know, I had to go back and say, okay, well, let's try it this way in order to have it happen, so.
Interesting, I didn't know that about the iPad.
We couldn't, I'm, it should be Kathleen. I met my brother-in-law who's a technology person and he just says he thinks it's in the application.
Interesting.
In my case, I downloaded Office on my iPad and I was able to do it.
Were you? Okay.
Look at that. Now we have a clue. Thank you, Ms. Timmons.
Yeah, I'm going to try that.
Right, welcome, Dr. Williams. Sorry about the technical glitches earlier.
No, no problem. We're here now and we're ready and raring to go.
Okay, so I thought I would have our clerk go around and roll call order and have us all identify ourselves so that you know who you're talking to.
We can see the names, but that's great.
Okay. I can make sure everyone waves ferociously, vigorously, so you know who's talking.
Yes.
So I'm Jen Bishop, I'm the clerk, and I will announce everybody as we go around. It's nice to meet you guys. Thank you for coming. Ms. Gilio, do you want to wave ferociously at the? And then, sorry, Ms. Raymond? I'm sure you know.
Y'all met me already.
Yes.
Ms. Oden? Ms. Brown? I'm sure you are aware of her from, I think there's some committee she's on.
We've had a few emails.
Mr. Guarino? There he is. Ms. Zee? And Ms. Timmons? Who you also know, I think.
Paula.
Ms. Johnson.
And that's all of us on the board. And there are more of us here from the district. Do you want me to wave you guys in as well?
Did you miss, I think you missed Ms. Johnson.
Sorry, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I want to thank Ms. Bell and Ms. Williams for coming tonight. Thank you.
And we also have Ms. Kinsella from the district, Ms. Hines, Mr. Donovan.
Oops, there he is.
And I had to switch screens, Ms. O'Gara. And I think that's it. Did I miss anybody?
No.
Well, that's the gang. All hail. We're all here and it's very nice to see you guys and we're excited for your presentation. All that, hand the meeting back to Ms. Raymond now.
Okay, this is fun. So welcome to both of you and thank you for coming. So this is our full board. We called a special meeting this evening. But typically, y'all guys, your point of contact will continue to be Ms. Brown for the board as she is the Chair of the Superintendent Search Committee. And then also our Communications Director, Ms. Hines, and our Director of HR, Ms. O'Gara. So Ms. Brown, did you want to take it away from here?
Sure, thank you, Ms. Raymond. So welcome, ladies. I'm glad that you're here with us tonight. I'm really excited about your presentation this evening. But we do have one more order of business before we move on. So we met with our attorney a little bit ago and he took a look at the draft contract and he had a few minor edits to put in there specifically pertaining to the any spending above the baseline amount of $17,500. And we just wanted to make sure that that's pre-approved before we, before any of that money gets spent through the board up to the amount of the $24,006. So that's all that we, that's primarily what we added into the contract. We recognize that you would probably want to take a look at that before you sign it, any kind of edits. But I'm pretty confident that you're not going to have any problems because it wasn't anything major to look at. So if it's good with your team, we'd still like to go ahead with the presentation for this evening, start to get the dates lined up and all that kind of stuff. I think hearing from about the process and the timeline is going to give both the community and our other board members some confidence moving forward about how productive this is going to be. So if you're good with that, I think we do have to make a motion to approve the contract as amended and then you guys can get back with us with the signatures tomorrow if that's okay with you.
That's fine.
I think that's good.
I'm seeing nodding. All right. And Heather, is it okay if I make a motion?
Yep, go ahead.
All right. So I'd like to move to approve the contract with BWP as amended on 3/1/21.
Seconded.
The motion was by Ms. Brown, seconded by Ms. Timmons. Does anyone have any questions or discussion before we take the vote? Ms. Zee?
My discussion was more when she was talking about the contract. She did not add the fact, I'm concerned that they should be aware that you added the clause about the two candidates in-house.
That is the other item of business that we, I'm sorry, thank you for reminding me, Ms. Zee. The other clause would be that we would like you to add to your list of considered candidates any internal candidate, or internal candidates that we have on our list as well, which I think was something that you had planned on doing as they go through the process. Is that okay?
That's correct. That's correct.
So the clause in the contract guarantees them a interview?
Yes. Let me ask a question with regards to that. Typically, we have the, we as the team look at that and they're again included as an interview, both from the perspective of looking at their application and credentials as well as from a courtesy perspective. I guess my next question would be with regards to the board, would you also have them included in the board's candidate pool that we would be recommending regardless of where we saw that they fit in terms of those that we looked at?
I think that would, I think that would depend on how far through the process we, how far down the line we get. Actually, I can ask you this question because it's something we wondered anyway that we were probably going to ask during your presentation. A few of the board members were wondering what, how many candidates you're planning on bringing to us for final vetting process? And if we get to the point, if we get to the end game and we do not find any candidates viable for this district, how does that work? So how many candidates and then what do we do if we're not pleased with any of them?
Yeah, and that was actually something we were going to be discussing with you. People make application for the position based on the profile that's developed with the community input that we will be getting to in a great deal of detail this evening. We then will interview the candidates that best match that profile and have the requisite background, et cetera. And then we generally will bring to you five to six individual for board interviews. And then typically, that six is narrowed down to three. That's pretty typical. Now, on occasion, that's changed, but Deb, wouldn't you say that's pretty typical?
That's relatively typical in terms of the three. And if you think of, and this is how I try to help organize who's who, you have applicants, and that's anybody that submits an application. Then you have candidates. The candidates are those people that we are moving out of the application phase that we've screened and we're recommending to you. So then they move from applicants to candidates. And then so the intent is that, and again, it usually is five to six, it may be seven. And that was kind of why I asked the question with regard to that first level of board interview, whether you wanted to have your internal candidates as a part of that initial group. So that's a conversation you need to have. Because then it means that if we find five candidates that we believe meet the criteria, then the question becomes if you have two or three interview internal candidates, would you like to have them included in that pool so that you may have as many as seven that you're interviewing? So that's, again, that's your decision, that's a conversation. Out of that pool, then you move to the semifinalists. And those that are the, usually it's two, sometimes it's, sometimes it's two, usually it's three, and in which you take through another process. And that process includes a second round interview, a little socialization with their spouses or significant others. Typically, we suggest to the board that they select a topic or an area for presentation and so that that second round of interviews is more intense. You find out more information. The candidate gets an opportunity to find out more about your community. And then from that semifinalist group, you choose a finalist. And that's the person that you want to offer a contract to. And so again, you make that determination. And if you only want us to do five, six candidates, fine, we'll take the six candidates. And typically, we use about an 80% match between the profile and the candidate and their application. But if you want us to automatically include your internal candidates, some of them may meet that 80% threshold, some of them may not. But that's, again, your determination in terms of whether you as the board want to interview those candidates. And we suggest that all board members participate in that first round of interviews with those six or seven candidates. And because from that, you're going to decide who your semifinalists are, that top three, two or three, maybe four, and then to vote on or to consider and decide who you want to offer the contract to. And again, that's something that the entire board should be participating in. And then the second part of that question was, so what if we don't find anyone who matches? We recommend then that we continue to search. We search until you find a match. I've only had one, two out of the last 15 or so years that I've been doing this where the, we did not find a candidate that suited what the board wanted to, wanted, was looking for in a candidate. So we meet with the board again and say, okay, this is what the profile says, what's missing? What else did you not see in those candidates that you're really seeking? So we then have to tinker with that profile information and go back out. Sometimes we go back to the pool of people that have already applied. Sometimes we reopen the search and extend it, you know, yet another four weeks or so to see who else will apply and modify that profile. So again, we get you the kind of superintendent that you're looking for that has the qualities and characteristics that you and the community have jointly agreed upon.
Fine, that sounds like a great, a great system if it's working. I think that's pretty good. I appreciate the fact that you continue to search until it finds the right fit.
And that's at no additional cost.
I also like that. All right, so does anyone else have any comments or questions? If we go ahead and just vote the contract and then we'll let Dr. Hill and Dr. Williams finish, start their official presentation?
Okay. All right then, I don't see anybody. Ms. Bishop, are you able to take the roll?
I am.
Okay, and Ms. Kinsella, could you send that contract by email to Dr. Hill and Dr. Williams so they have it ASAP? Wait, who just left? I'll figure it out. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
I think it was Ms. Williams.
I think it was Ms. Williams.
Ah, okay.
I'll let her back in as soon as she comes in.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. On the motion to approve the contract, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
No.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Oh. You can't hear me?
Yeah. No. Did you say no?
She said no.
You said no. Ms. Timmons?
Can you not hear me?
It was just it was very faint and because I wasn't looking at you, I didn't get the full picture. So Ms. Seem, you're saying no.
That's correct.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Okay. One, two, three. So motion passes five to four.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. So we have an approved motion to approve the contract. So once Ms. Hill and Ms. Williams take a look at that and indicate that they're in complete agreement, then we can I can sign it. So hopefully that will happen. So next, Ms. Hill and Ms. I'm sorry, Dr. Hill and Dr. Williams, do you have a presentation for us this evening?
We have a lot of information for you this evening. And you may, if you feel comfortable, call us Kathleen and Deborah respectively. And I believe Ms. Kinsella, I sent her a great deal of information, which I am presuming have been forwarded to you. And the primary document that we're going to be working from tonight is the Nashville School District Superintendent Search Process and Calendar Timeline Document. I will be referencing the other documents, which included the draft of an initial posting, which I'm sure Ms. Hines will also want to add to, but that was just a sample. And additionally, position advertisements, some of them that you may choose from, all some whatever that we'll be talking about later. We gave you a draft of a community survey, and I suspect that a number of these items you're going to have your ad hoc committee working on to fine tune and personalize using that as a base. You additionally have a sample of an engagement information flower flyer. Again, Ms. Hines, I'm I'm pretty sure you're going to be weighing in on that. We provided to you also a sample of a focus group scheduled via Zoom so that you could see how we move forward with that. You'll notice that on that one schedule, there's an additional column in the event you have so many different focus groups, we may have to bring somebody else in to help gather information with us. And then you also have a very lengthy document specifically geared toward boards evaluation of candidates and tasks to be performed. And we'll be talking about that a little bit as we go through this process. So our process is a really multi-phased approach. And we mentioned that in both the presentation that we gave to you as well as the proposal. And the basic there are basically four elements of that multi-phase. And the first is specification, and that's a big part of what we're going to be doing tonight. We all need to be on the same page. And then we need to iron out some issues with regard to the calendar. And that's probably going to be one of the most challenging things that we're going to be dealing with. And we are going to go through lots of details. And the first page, and I don't know if Ms. Kinsella can share the documents so it's on the screen or you just are all looking at it from your places. Which do you prefer?
I'm sorry, we can I can certainly share for you, Dr. Williams. It does kind of obliterate everybody's view when we do that. So I don't know if you want me to pull them up and then we'll pull them down or whatever works.
Well, that's up to the board.
Okay.
That's purely up to the board.
So I would say if we are going to share, and I think that will be helpful, because typically, we send out a packet and we post it on our website in advance of our meetings so that the public is able to access any materials. And since we weren't able to do that with these materials, it would be helpful for the public watching if they could see what we're talking about.
Yeah, certainly.
Instead of me just having it open on my screen for myself. So having said that, I won't be able to see hands if someone has a question because I can only see like four people at a time. So if people could use the chat function to let me know. And then, Dr. Williams, is it your preference that people like kind of interject with questions or wait until you have finished?
We can do the interjections, but with that being said, I may be answer Deb and I may be answering a lot of those questions, but if if you are moved with the question, definitely, this is all about informing you and helping you understand and answer your questions. So it's it's really entirely up to you.
Thank you. I will keep a list so people who feel that they would prefer to use the chat and have me write your name down on the list for questions, I'll leave that as an option as well. And then we'll just go in order of who who chatted first.
Sure.
Ms. Raymond, can I can I start before we because I I want to make sure that there's some clarity about not only the process, but about the BWP approach to this process so that both the community and audience and the board are reminded of of our philosophy relative to the superintendent search. One of the key things is transparency. We believe that the more transparent the process is, the more engaged the community feels like they are, the better chances for success of the new superintendent. So that's number one. And that transparency that transparency then lends itself to the notion of communication. And so we will not be providing you with any documents up until we get to the actual personnel records of the the candidates that we recommend that cannot be made public. That can be they can and there's no need to FOIA. And so one of the things we're going to recommend is that on your website, you have a special link to all things superintendent search so that the documents that we'll be going over today, once we've edited or modified those so that they're they're complete and they're clear, that can be posted and so that anyone can go at any time to see what the process is and where we are in the process relative to that piece. So that's the first thing. The second thing is we want to ensure that all members of the community feel that they're a part of this process. We don't want anyone to go away saying, I didn't know that we were doing finding the superintendent. I didn't get a chance to have a say so in that. You know, that should not happen. And one of the ways that you minimize that is by ensuring that if all of the members of the public know, that they also share the information. So that one of the things that we particularly will talk about when we talk about the community survey is in ensuring that people know that one way to provide input is to share, to to take the survey. And so I'm I'm deputizing right now, everybody that's on this screen, you are now ambassadors of this process. And as an elementary school teacher, this is your homework assignment. Your homework assignment is, once the survey goes up, each one reach one. So get someone that you know, whether it's your neighbor, your spouse, your kids, your grandkids, the people that you see in a supermarket, anyone that's engaged in your community, to go to your website, click the link and take the survey. And it will help tremendously by word of mouth. And that again is again, your homework assignment. I'm anticipating that everyone here will get an A and that we will even have some gifted superstars who will get more than one person to take the survey. And of course, we would like for you to take the survey as well. But that notion of showing the community where their input is valued in the process becomes a critical mass in terms of the success of the next superintendent. And so I want to put that out front. I want the community to recognize that they don't get to vote for the new superintendent as you, the board members will do, but they get to provide you with input and feedback about both your community as well as the skill sets and characteristics that you'd like to see in the new superintendent. So I think that those are are pretty important components, pretty important issues. Both Kathleen and I, in terms of your your website, want our contact information put there so that any community member that has a question about the process or the survey or the calendar or any of that and would like to contact us directly can do so. And again, that's just a part of our process. So I'm not going to say anymore about that, but I will remind you periodically that you do have homework and that I'm expecting As from all of this group as well as from other members of the community that we'll be in touch with.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. I appreciate that. And I think you'll find that we're in New Hampshire and we have a high level of community civic engagement, so.
Well, you may recall that my daughter-in-law is from the Boston area and when she married my son, they lived in Derry, New Hampshire for many years. All three of my grandchildren were born in Derry and annually, they go to, I believe it's Pleasant Lake in Deerfield, New Hampshire every single summer to get a little bit more of New Hampshire. And I have spent a great deal of time flying to and from Manchester and going to Derry and traveling about your breathtakingly beautiful state and the surrounding areas. So one of the sidebar I can say is that it is going to be a pretty easy sell for somebody to want to come to New Hampshire. And I'm well aware of the engagement that's there through my son and daughter-in-law. So just just that little piece. So I was saying that our multi-phase process includes specification, which is all about tonight. And it also, we will be talking you about recruitment and hopefully having you make some decisions regarding that. We Deb already inserted a little bit about engagement of your internal and your external stakeholders. And and then there is the selection process, which we're going to get to. For the purpose of tonight, there are a lot of things we need to decide tonight. And I'm just going to tell you what some of those are. I'm going to go through the process and then we'll come back and talk about that. And some of them, I think.
Kathleen, your voice is going out. Kathleen is now gone. Remember what we said a little bit earlier about the technology phase?
Yeah. Oh, dear. Okay. Why don't we go ahead and put that document, the multi-phase approach specifications on the screen so that we have that? Dr. Hill, are you able to speak to it?
Sure. Yes.
Dr. Williams is back a little bit.
Yes.
I still can't hear her, though.
But Kathleen, you're on mute.
My, I lost all of you and then it muted me. So tonight, we're going to talk about the impact COVID as having. And based on the fact that all of you are conducting your meetings, we're suggesting and assuming that we're going to be pretty much doing a virtual search with you until we get down to perhaps the final three candidates. Is that something that, okay, I see a lot of heads nod.
Lots of nodding. I think that's what our understanding is as well as well as what Dr. Hill was speaking to earlier, is having our internal candidates make it to the interview round.
Right.
So it sounds like we're all on the same page, which is fantastic way to start.
Deb already talked to you about our confidentiality protocols. That's a part of what our company does. We want people to apply and we don't want them to be fearful that their current jobs are in danger, particularly if they are not moved forward. She also mentioned the transparency and communication issue that we're going to be getting into more detail about in a few minutes. You talked about the letter of understanding, which we were going to ask you about. So check that that has been taken care of. We want you to be thinking as a board also about contract parameters, a range. I don't know if you would be working with your with Dana on that or you would be working with your CFO in terms of knowing what the parameters for your area are, but that's something you want to start percolating. Also, I just want to confirm with all of you that the liaisons, the the people that we will be going to outside of the ad hoc committee are Jessica Brown and is it Tara or Tara?
Either or.
Oh, which do you prefer?
Tara.
Tara. Am I correct that those two will be our major liaisons to to all of you? And then the ad hoc committee, we have Stacy Hines, Dana, Tara, board members, Jessica, Heather, Gloria, and Sandra, correct? Okay, look how quickly, we're just checking these off confirming. So we're going to review the entire search process as we look at dates. And during this time, we're going to establish the search process timeline with which Deb and I have provided you a draft. This is very flexible. We do not know what your meeting schedules are. We don't know what your other business or attending. We're on the next page, page two. We don't know if you're going to be going to workshops or what. So we want to get a really good handle on the calendar and the timeline before we end tonight. And then we have to set dates, which hopefully all of you brought your calendars so that we can set some dates to look at when you're going to be interviewing, when we can meet with you, to share a slate of candidates and at the same time, provide a workshop to you to help you develop interview questions and then associated rubrics so you're all rating candidates with the same mindset. And if you like, we can also provide a workshop on consensus building strategies. We need to set some on that timeline. We're looking at when we would be having that community focus group experience. We also want to have you look at some dates that will be in the calendar about reviewing that sample posting and changing it any way you need to so we can get the process rolling and post it post the vacancy right away. We want you to be able to review that sample. so we can get the process rolling and post it, post the vacancy right away. Um, we um, want you to be able to review that sample survey, maybe your ad hoc team make modifications and eventually you need to approve it. And I don't know um, with your ad hoc committee, if you're, or um, the board is allowing that ad hoc committee to approve the advertisements that are going to go in the professional journals and/or our initial posting, which will immediately go on our website and on your website. And when you hear Deb and I speak of an initial posting, I want to take you back to what she said. We're going to be engaging your stakeholders to develop a leadership profile. And those are going to be all the characteristics, the details, the qualities that you're looking forward to hiring in your next superintendent leader. And the initial posting won't have that because we don't know what it is yet. So we need to have an initial posting that goes on our website, your website. And then we need to develop the actual um, advertising posting because that's going to be a little bit, little bit more limited in the number of words we can have on any of those postings. We need to know from you um, if there's any customized services that you would like us to provide. Um, we have provided a sample of the survey in English. The question is, do you want it in other languages? Um, that's another decision that has to be made. And we also need to know which prof- professional posting sites you desire um, to have those advertisements posted on. So let's go right to the calendar. And we're meeting this week. And so we're gonna ho- hopefully be able to iron out lots of details tonight. But going into the next week, that's when we really are hoping we can launch um, our earnest recruitment efforts. Um, we need to implement a marketing campaign, starting with that position announcement. And um, as I said, I gave you a sample one. And that initial announcement, you want to sell candidates on coming um, to New Hampshire and most specifically to Nashua and to your school district. So you want to get that hook to have them interested in the position. And then you want to speak to, like I did in the sample, um, specifically from in- information I gleaned from your webpages and from the, the city's webpages. So as soon as we get that done next week, we're going to post that initial position on our website, which will reach many, many people immediately. And then we immediately open our electronic web-based application system. So as soon as we post that, we could get people applying instantaneously, actually. Any questions about that, about next week? So I don't know, um, it's, and I will, after we set some dates, I will um, give you an actual calendar um, that will talk about um, the days um, that we specifically decide, um, the activity that's happening, who's responsible, and whether or not it's happened, kind of a checklist, if you will. I will provide that, or Deb and I will provide that to you. So.
Ms. M has a question.
My question goes back to the advertising that you were talking about and, and the cost of it. And I guess I would ask, who's a, who is going to approve that? Is it going to be the chair? Is it going to be the committee, the subcommittee, or is it going to be the body as a whole?
Well, that's something you need to decide.
Okay.
But it also go, it also goes back to what you had talked about a little bit earlier and, or someone had talked about a little bit earlier about approval of the cost for that as well as the um, the actual organization. We will give you a list of the organizations that we're recommending and what the cost will be as well as the timeframe. For example, many organizations, you have to purchase at least a 30-day ad. Some organizations, you can have only a two-week ad. Some organizations have a 45-day ad. Some organizations are free. And so we usually start with the free ones first. But we put together a recommended set of, of advertisements. And then you get to choose. You get to choose whether you want to do all of them, one of them, none of them, uh, and the timeframe. And then you'll already have what the cost estimate will be for those.
And you have that as um, one of your attachments that I sent to you.
The cost, okay, thank you.
With all the, with all the costs. And actually, I, I said, I tallied them up so that if you hired everyone with the exception of the New Hampshire Association of School Administrators, I could not find um, their fees for posting on their site. I um, sent them a communication and have not yet heard. And our, one of our administrative assistants has reached out. As soon as we have that, we will let you know. That is one that I think um, is pretty critical. But if you added up everything that I had on the list, that would be $1,895 if you did every single one, with the exception of the New Hampshire Association of School Administrators. But it would be a very good thing to know as to, is the ad hoc committee um, going to, will the board say they can decide? Or do you want to discuss that um, tonight and make that decision, which would make it much easier?
Can I say, Mike?
This is Dana. We have a account with the New Hampshire School Administrators.
Okay.
And we also have a con- an account with um, Ed Weekly and our rate is lower than yours.
Wonderful. We did not know that, of course. So thank you. And that's not our rate. That's when we call and ask. That's what they tell us it is.
So my recommendation for that actually would be that we have um, Stacy and Dana, check it out for um, where we want to put the advertisements. And then we ha- actually do have a meeting on Monday night. Um, if they bring a recommendation for where we want to spend our advertising money um, based on that, if that's okay with you?
Perfect.
We do it Wednesday night because of the timeframe that she's suggesting?
Sure, either one, yeah. Whichever one, um, whenever Stacy has a recommendation for us. That sounds, if that's okay with you, Stacy? Is that putting you on, is that putting you on the spot?
That makes me happy. Thank you.
No, I actually have a list here already that I'd like to talk over with Dana, so.
Excellent. Well, I was gonna say, so maybe you guys could get together with uh, Kathleen and Deb and see where, or do an email or something that for their recommend, based on their recommendations and money that's spent. Sweet, thank you.
Great. And we certainly, we have um, budget on Wednesday night. We could certainly schedule, if we have um, some information by Wednesday night, we could certainly schedule um, a short um, special board event then. And um, as Ms. Brown said, we do have our regular scheduled meeting on Monday night. Um, so anything could be brought forward then as well. And that would give the ad hoc committee a chance to me if needed this week. So. We just need to know by Thursday. Okay.
Okay, so moving on to the week of March 15th through 19th, um, that's when we're hoping, um, you're, you're going to make a decision about the actual sites, but we're hoping that um, a decision can be made about exactly what the advertisement posting will read. And um, I am guessing uh, Stacy and Dana, you're going to want to uh, be directly involved in that. Is that safe to say?
Yes.
Yes.
And does that timeline work for you to be able to um, actually um, get something written and completed so um, we can actually, the week of March 15th through 19th? And we um, are looking at a six-week posting that of course can be changed. Um, but we um, would like that formal advertising to occur that week, knowing that as Deb was saying, you are purchasing for different, different amounts of time. And the day you submit, the advertisement isn't always the day they post it or advertise it. And um, so it could be staggered. And many of the um, ads are not going to be, like Deb said, you, you're buying them in increments of time. So perhaps Stacy and Dana, you could also make a recommendation in terms of how long you, you feel within the budget that you have, you want those postings to occur. So we've worked with other districts that decide they're going to buy two blocks of two weeks, et cetera. So if you could come with that recommendation, that would be very helpful, too.
No problem.
Okay. All right, so um, when that formal advertising um, occurs in the national organizations, uh, we immediately start networking. Uh, well, we start doing that as soon as we, we uh, post. But with other contacts and associates um, that might match the needs that are initially in that advertisement. Oh, the other thing that I wanted to mention is we're going to go through um, a process to get a leadership profile, particularly by engaging everyone that um, opts to participate. However, some organizations, some of these professional organizations will not modify the um, advertisement that you posted. We can modify it on the BWP website. You can modify it um, on your own webpage. But um, the actual advertisements, there are some uh, professional organizations that will not allow a change. So it wouldn't incorporate the um, actual leadership profile. So what we typically do, and what I did on the sample posting was, um, I added a, a sentence that said, "Please check the website for a revised posting of the position for specific characteristics, qualities, and skills sought after." And once we will, um, once Deb and I um, create an audit for you of the feedback from those um, focus groups from the community survey, from the um, all the input that we have, then we can put a date on there if we know um, tonight or what, prior to the, the posting of when people need to check our website or yours for the specific profile information. All right? So just so you know that. Now, in terms of um, the engagement process, this is where I think we will probably be utilizing that ad hoc group. Um, we want to um, have a group of individuals and, and maybe it's, it's um, Stacy and others that are going to identify stakeholders that you feel critically need to be engaged in the process. So off the top of my head, you certainly want a representative group of teachers. You want students. You want your business partners, your community partners. Um, we're going to be interviewing you and we'll, we'll talk about that. Um, if you've done a strategic planning process, you know that there are groups of individuals. You want to cross that demographic that you have in your community so that um, there aren't any marginalized groups that aren't being included. So we're going to need, and I think that ad hoc group would be a perfect group to get together and say, what organizations do we need to have here? Can we combine them in a group of like six to 15 people? Maybe the Chamber of Commerce, maybe Rotary, whatever groups you have that you feel um, you want to invite to the table. Other um, post-secondary um, uh, institutions that you have, that if you work with them, if you're partnering. But you get the general idea. So we need um, to have a group of people identify the various focus groups that Deb and I are going to be interviewing. And you can um, invite people to be the specific representatives or in some instances, if, let's say you have an NAACP organization and you want them at the table, you may say, well, you pick two representatives to serve on a focus group. And then the focus group can be of members of that group and any others that you have. But you um, are the individuals that know best. Uh, just one second, Sandra. And board members can also recommend, I'm guessing, to this ad hoc committee. So do you think that it's the ad hoc committee will, that will be taking this charge on? And Sandra, I know you want it, I, I can see you, so I can't see everybody else, but.
How many is too many?
I'm sorry?
How many in this group is too many?
We said, we don't want to have more than 15 people in a group, with the exception of the um, community open group, which we'll, we'll talk about in a minute. Otherwise, I can't, can't share very much.
So one of the things, if you think in terms of the group size, you can have multiple groups as one group. So you can have the Chamber, Ministerial Alliance, but you don't want to have more than 15 people in a focus group. But recognize, both Kathleen and I can do six to eight focus groups on a day. So if we're, if they're the two of us, so again, we take a look at your list of focus groups and how you group them together to determine um, how many we're going to be able to accomplish. We try to do this all on one day. And so that everybody is, is um, logged into a Zoom focus group. And that's why the, the sizes are pretty much capped at about 15.
So act, so just to, just to clarify, I, I, actually, you did a really good job. We will have, um, you said you can do six a day with, so six times two, we'll have at least 12 focus groups with maybe two representatives in each group from multiple um, organizations. My suggestion would be, um, if this is okay with, if this is the will of the board, um, possibly, I don't know, one of the days this week, either Wednesday or Thursday, we can get the uh, Superintendent Search Committee together. We can have all the board members email us. And actually, if the community wants to email us groups that are interested, and we can start narrowing down um, those kind of assigned groups and see how we're going to divide that task up. Um, and come to a recommendation again with the, you guys probably next week. Does that seem appropriate?
Yes, and even to the point where when you start looking at those groups, if you have, you know, more than that fit, more than, than it seems like Kathleen and I can do, we can add an additional associate to come in and again, work on that same day. But that's one of the reasons why it's important for you to identify the groups and then pair them up uh, with a maximum of 15 in a, in a group. Uh, and then that will determine whether both Kathleen and I can handle all the groups that you come up with or whether we need to add an additional person to come in to do some other groups. And you need to separate, and I know Kathleen is going to talk about this, there, there's a focus group. There are the individual interviews that we will be doing with all of the board members, which you'll talk about a little bit later. Then at the end of the day, of whatever day we've determined for the focus groups, there will be an open community meeting. And that's for anyone that wants to attend that didn't get invited to a focus group. For both the focus group and the community. For both the focus group and the community meeting, participants have to register. So they will, again, when you set up the system with the invitation, they will need to register because we're doing this via Zoom. And we want to make sure that we have security and control over those groups in terms of who's coming with regards to that. So it's not only the focus groups that people have an opportunity to come and voice their opinions, but it's also the open community meeting that takes place. And again, you'll set the time based on your community populations and parents are working and all of that stuff. But usually it's, you know, six or seven o'clock. And it lasts for the same amount of time. It's about an hour activity. I just want to say one more thing before Kathleen concludes that part. Every group, the focus group, the interviews, the community forum, and the survey questions that we talked about are really responding to the same four questions. What are the strengths of the district and the community? What are areas or issues for the community and the schools? What are the skill sets and characteristics you would like to see in the new, in the next superintendent? And what other considerations should the board have when they're interviewing and screening these applicants? So all of these pieces, all of those, those components are related to those four questions.
Excellent. And I think Stacy Hines might have had one question as well.
Actually, you answered my question. That's exactly, I wanted to clarify that the, the interviews, the focus group, the community meeting and the survey are all focused on gaining data to develop that leadership profile.
So you end up with both quantitative and qualitative data.
Right.
And again, it's about at an eighty percent level.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, I had one more question just procedurally. When we determine the groups that we want to have representatives from, should we reach out to ask them? Or do we give you the groups that were interested in having contribute and you reach out to them?
No, you're, it's your outreach. I think Kathleen, I don't know if you included a sample invitation, but you invite them. You invite them to participate. You not only identified the group, but you've also given them the parameters in terms of the number of representatives that they may want to consider. And then they make that determination who from their particular stakeholder group they want to send. But all of that comes from the district, comes from the board in terms of that invitation with regards to community engagement.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm just going to jump in there. All of that kind of work, just like when we did our ad hoc committee for our strategic plan, all of this work, as far as the focus groups and identifying them, will be done at the superintendent search ad hoc committee level. Board members are always invited to attend. And we got some recent clarity about that. Board members are able to attend any committee group they want to and participate in that committee. They just don't vote. But this way, we don't have the, the burden of having to have all nine members clear their schedules, possibly more than once a week, to meet with the ad hoc committee to, to make all of these focus group kind of decisions. So. And we will bring to the full board anything that needs to be approved by the full board.
So we generally leave a week for people to be able to RSVP to you so they can set aside some time to attend those focus groups. So the week of March fifteenth through the nineteenth, you will have identified the people you wish to invite. You will have created an invitation. And I, I did give you a sample copy just so that you would have something to understand what might be sent out. And certainly, Stacy, you may have, you may totally rewrite it. That was just a sample. But then, once the invitations are ready, then the week of March fifteenth through the nineteenth is when you want to extend those invitations, make sure you have an RSVP process and a deadline so that together we can finalize a schedule. And then by that week, we also would like to have that online survey amended and/or approved. I gave you a sample of that and no doubt you're going to want to edit that. I tried to include some things that, from your website, on what you're working on and the demographics that you have in your community could be embedded in that. But you certainly can make modifications as you deem fit. And we want to, it's, it's not just important that we create that, it's that we give notice of the survey, that it's advertised and posted in the best possible ways that you can to reach your stakeholders. So they know that it's there. And we are looking right now to launch that survey on March nineteenth. We have a person with whom we work that will, I don't know if they'll be working with you, Stacy, or they'll be working with the tech director. But our person will, can post the survey and can remove it depending upon what your tech person wants. But we take, you don't have to worry about that if our tech person can have access to the, the site to post it on. And then we also take it off. And it's usual, our surveys are posted for two weeks. So we've invited focus group members. We've got the open call for community members, which they still have to RSVP. We've launched that survey. And then Deb and I will be looking to set some dates and times with each board member. Usually takes thirty to forty-five minutes. It's confidential between us. However, with that being said, we generally will create a report, if the board so desires, of the feedback that came from the board regarding what do you view as the strengths of the district and the community? What do you view the challenges as? What are the characteristics or qualities you specifically are looking at? And what other things do you think the board should be considered? And one of the other things we do ask every single focus group and the community group, and we will be asking you, do you have any nominations that you would like us to reach out to these individuals, letting them know, not who, but that their name came up here, the, if the position is posted and like anybody else, they are invited to apply? Deb, did you want to add anything to that with regard to nominees?
No, my, this is again, where your homework assignment comes in. Once the survey is launched, that, that officially starts your homework assignment. So that I want you to, to, you know, keep in mind in terms of the calendar. The other thing is that one of the things we promote during the focus groups, again, is to encourage people to take the survey. So that's why you'll see that there's a little bit of, of time difference between the date of the focus group and when the survey closes.
We will need to set a date for the day we will have the focus groups and the community forum. So we can do that now or come back to it. Why don't we come back to it and I'll get through the whole process? And then we can go back to all the dates we need to schedule. So then on April second, in my draft calendar, we're looking at closing the survey. And by the way, it will be at midnight. People get a little, like, when is it closing? The whole day it's open. And when we close it, you know, on April second or whatever day you decide if you, if you don't like that date. It goes till midnight. And then our tech person actually has it scheduled to be closed after two weeks. And then Deb and I take the information that we have gathered from all of the focus groups, the community forum, the survey. And we pull quantitative data from that in a report for the board as well as the qualitative piece. In the survey, we allow, if you so choose, for people to make comments. And then we pull comments together. And we encourage you, when we bring the full report to you and that matter of transparency, that, that report, survey data and the community forum input is posted on your website. So people actually do know that we listened and we provided you with the information.
The board actually will then need to approve the leadership profile. So it'll, it, once we've done the presentation of, here's all the data, here's all the information based on our, and we do a frequency distribution analysis of all of that data and come up with a list of probably ten to fifteen skill sets and characteristics that again, collectively across the communities, identify the skill sets and characteristics you're looking for. And as a board, you are given an opportunity to review that and to determine, yes, this is, this seems like it's pretty accurate. Or this one, I'm not so sure about. But we actually provide you with that profile to approve. And then that becomes the blueprint for analyzing, for screening, for continuing our recruitment, for your process of interviewing, for your process of reviewing, for your process of selecting. And again, the community now knows what we're looking for and why.
And so once the board approves the profile, that's when we revise the job posting on our website. It will be revised on your website in any of the advertised websites that will allow that to be changed. And again, that's why that sentence at the bottom of all the advertisement postings is so critical, saying, "By this date, you need to look back at the website to see the specific profile," or something to that effect. And then a formal announcement of that leadership profile, once approved, needs to be provided to the stakeholders so that they know what the outcome of their time and efforts and the people who completed the survey know that this is what came of all of that information. So that's that transparency piece. And we will work with Stacy to make sure at those critical points of the search that we're constantly sending out information to keep people abreast of what's going on. And hopefully, Stacy, there's going to be that prominent space on the webpage so people don't have to dig to figure out where information about the superintendent search is. And Deb and I have gotten very frustrated with some school districts because they bury it and people can't find it. So it will be a shining star for all of you to be able to make that information easily accessed so they can read what's going on. And we can.
We will. I know, we'll take that for it, yep.
Yep, great, thank you. All right. Flip the page here, let's go on to April twenty-third. If you could, yeah, thank you, Tara. And on April twenty-third, this is approximately six weeks after we posted, we're looking at closing the search. And immediately after we are not close the search, I beg your pardon, close the applications, we will immediately move into the selection process where Deb and I will review the applications. And by the way, we are notified every time somebody submits one. So we can be looking at those as they're submitted. But they can go back, they can modify. So immediately after we close, we spend a great deal of time reviewing every single applicant. And we assess the qualifications. And we will determine which candidates best match that district profile. And then we'll screen, as we started out this conversation, to five to six individuals for board interviews. And that may change determining upon your desire to add some people based on our initial conversation. Before we bring forward a slate of candidates to you, we conduct a very extensive research into each candidate's backgrounds, including online profiles. We contact their references, we speak to people. And just a comment, as a school district, I am sure you have a protocol. And Dana, I know you were there somewhere, where you conduct your criminal background checks on every single hire, is that correct?
We do that in HR every day.
Yeah. So we're counting on you to do that. And that's the only thing we won't be doing is the criminal.
That's, and that's essentially for the final candidate, not necessarily for all the previous.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, and so then we say the end of the week of May third. It takes us a while to interview. It takes us a while to do the phone calls and the background checks. But at the end of the week of May third, we are looking to bring a slate of candidates. And I pulled this law that said the responsibility of hiring the superintendent rests with the board. And so we will be wanting to set a date with you as to when we can present that slate to the full board of education. And at that time, we will provide you an extensive review of each candidate in a narrative along with their qualifications. And in addition, we will provide you with a report that entails the total number of people who applied for the position, the positions they currently hold, and the states from which they reside. So you will get that report along with the slate. While we bring that to you, the board needs to approve that. And then, once the board does approve the slate, then we will open a portal for the board to review all the documentation that has been submitted by candidates. Deb, do you want to go into a little more detail about that portal and the confidentiality issue with regard to that information?
Because these are personnel files and we don't want the copies floating around, what we do is we create a secure Dropbox. And once you've approved the slate, then one of our technicians will send you an email that gives you the link to the Dropbox and the password to the Dropbox. And the Dropbox materials will be everything that we've received as a part of the application process for those individuals that we presented to you as candidates. You're, the, the reason it's set up in a Dropbox is in as much security as we could provide relative to those personnel files, is that you cannot download them or copy them. Of course, people figure out ways to work around it. But in essence, But, uh, in essence, it's, we will ask you to consider signing a confidentiality, uh, document and statement saying that you will not be sharing this information with anyone outside of the board. Uh, it protects you, it protects the candidates, um. And then, uh, there's a certain protocol and procedure for the actual Dropbox. You will, the Dropbox will be open for the first six candidates. And then when you have narrowed it down to your semifinalists, the candidates that you're no longer considering, their documents will not be accessible to you. Uh, again, and you'll continue to just have access to those candidates that you are seriously considering. Once you get to your finalists, everybody else's materials will be, uh, removed. And we will then send you a hard copy packet, um, of the six candidates that you, I'm sorry, the three candidates that you reviewed for the final, uh, semifinal round. And that way you will have hard copies of their information. But it really is a protective measure, uh, for both you and the applicants. One of the things that we find is that your applicant pool, uh, the more confidentiality you attach to this process, the deeper your pool is, the more, uh, people will take a risk. Uh, it does not help when their names are out there and they're not even considered one of the semifinalists. It really puts their jobs in jeopardy. I could tell you a couple of horror stories of, of information leaking out, uh, to the public about who's interested, who's applying, et cetera, that has caused people to lose their jobs. Uh, and not even, you know, become a part of the district that they've applied for. So your pool can be deep and your pool can be substantive, uh, the more you lean towards the confidentiality of this process.
So, um, can you scroll up please Tara, thank you. So, once we've approved a slate, um, Deb and I want to arm you, prepare you as best as possible to, um, develop some skillsets to interview candidates. And, um, I always tell boards this, bear in mind that while you're interviewing candidates, they're interviewing you right back. They want to know, do they want to work with you? Do they want to come to that district? So just keep that in the back of your heads while you're in control of the interview. Um, people, the, the candidates want to know, they're, they're looking at how you interview, how you interact. So we will go over all kinds of things like that with you. And we will, um, conduct a workshop with you to identify the key questions. We give you, we can give you a huge number of questions. We can talk about who asks the questions, how you are more comfortable doing that. And then ultimately, how you connect it, those questions have to be connected to the leadership profile. So you can see that leadership profile, this is what you've said you wanted. Now we have the questions that are linked to that. And then we also provide you with a rubric so that you're all on the same page. For example, what does a one mean? What does a two mean? What does a three mean? So there, there shouldn't be a lot of discrepancy between, um, your rating of, of those candidates. Um, we will also, um, talk to you about what's legally permissible and not permissible to ask. I remember, um, when I was interviewing for a position, um, a board member asked, um, how I could be a mom and, um, an assistant superintendent of schools. And I, that takes you aback a little bit. And I remember saying to the him, he owned an Ace Hardware. How was it that he could be a dad and owner of an Ace Hardware and manage it? And it's, it's the same kind of thing, but it was very off putting to me, um, that that question, um, would be asked. So we will talk to you about that. And then if you so choose, we will identify, um, strategies that help, um, can, uh, bring your board together. I, my last superintendency, I had nine board members. And, um, we used a number of strategies when we had particularly challenging decisions to make, um, on how to build consensus. And we would be more than happy to do that. And then, um, starting the week of May tenth, um, you will begin virtually, um, interviewing that first round of candidates. And we need to, um, if we can set those times tonight, um, that would be great. Um, we will actually, uh, when you give us those dates and those timeframes, um, Deb and I will actually contact and schedule candidates for you. Um, you're going to want to decide which questions you're going to ask, who will ask and the tools and instruments you're, you're going to be using during the process. And, um, determine in advance, so your whole board knows, um, what's our decision-making process going to be? And then, of course, you're going to want to select your finalists. And again, we will, um, contact the people who are moving forward as well as those candidates who are not. And then the week of May seventeen through the twenty-first, um, the full board will have the opportunity to conduct its interviews with two to the three, um, finalists. Um, at that time, as Deb mentioned earlier, this helps you have a deeper, um, conversation with these candidates, really getting to know how good of a fit they're going to be for Nashua. And in many instances, we find that it's very helpful if you ask the candidate during that final interview to do maybe a brief ten-minute presentation, for example, on what would your first ninety days be like? And that will tell you a lot about where they will be spending their time with whom, et cetera. But we can talk about that more at that time. And then, again, you'll determine the strategies you're going to use to narrow down to your final choice. Um, once you make that, that final selection, uh, you need to decide some districts like to have a site visit, um, in the district and community that isn't done, um, as often anymore. And particularly, um, during COVID times. But that is something that, um, you will want to decide. And then, um, as you heard me say, Deb and I notify, um, people up to this point as to who was selected. And it is, um, we think, um, a much nicer introduction if, when, if and when your board decides on the final candidate, that generally your, um, Board of Education president reaches out or whomever you choose to notify that candidate of his or her selection. It's, it's your first opportunity to share, share really positive news. And again, we will, um, select those individuals or we will contact those in, individuals who are not selected. And, um, then contract negotiations commence. And we are suspecting that that will occur May twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth, supposing that it will only take one week. And this is a, a, a draft and obviously very flexible. Um, and I am presuming you're looking at a July one, twenty-twenty-one start date. Um, and, um, you will have enough time to do some transition planning with the new superintendent, um, and the district, et cetera. And then we're thinking, um, June first through fourth, again, um, this could be changed where there is formal board approval of a contract. And then, um, a presentation, introduction, communication to your community, everyone announcing, um, the next, um, great leader of the Nashua School District. So that takes you through, um, the process with some dates. And now we need to go back and actually have you pull out your calendars. Or do you need to take a break to go to the bathroom?
Well, and Sandra has a question.
Well, my, my question is, I think we have a vacation week in April. Is that not true Heather? And if it is, can you remind me what it was or did that affect this calendar?
Um, yes, we do have a vacation week in April. It's the week of April twenty-sixth, uh, through the thirtieth.
Well, does that, is that okay? Does that cause any problem?
Well.
Well, one of the, one of the things that will happen is as you now go back, now that you've seen the full scope of this, now you need to go back and to tinker with it. And we may not get it all finished tonight. Uh, this is a, a flex calendar. So now you need to plug in because you also want to look at other things that may be happening in the community. For example, if there's something going on virtually, uh, you don't want to schedule, you don't want to schedule your focus group community meeting on that same night or maybe even in that same week. So the intent was to provide you with, um, kind of a, a guesswork calendar. And now you can go back and, and actually, um, plug in some dates. Uh, from my perspective, the hardest dates are for all the, the, to pick the dates for both the first round interviews and the second round interviews where all nine of you will be available. That's tough because you're gonna need to be available for, on, on two different occasions for three semi-consecutive, uh, timeframes. And so that will be a, a real challenge. And if you can even just get through that tonight, uh, that will set you up, uh, because we worked this calendar backwards from the day that you, um, you've indicated, you know, wanting to have someone start. And everything else then becomes a domino effect. So if you push things forward or push things back, it has a tendency to have an impact on whether you can actually have six weeks in application, whether you can have these particular dates for a report. So that's one of the, the tinkering pieces that you'll need to do tonight. Uh, and then I just need to say, I'm going to, going to have to leave in about fifteen minutes. And Kathleen will continue to work with you. And I have a, a Zoom meeting that I'm hosting, so I can't even fake it and not, and not show up, uh, because I have to let everybody else into the meeting.
Well, uh, thank you so much, Dr. Howe. So what exactly do we need tonight as far as dates go? I don't think that equal vacation will be too much of a problem because our district offices are still open that week.
But that's when we're going to be doing, um, our applications and our interviews. So it has zero impact on you.
I just noticed that in the calendar as well, so.
So what, what, as Deb said, um, would be really, really helpful is for the board to look at their calendars, um, for the week of May tenth. And Deb, how many do, we can do two or three days depending on their availability to interview those six candidates? And it depends.
And what you want to think in terms of, let's say you're working with six. So you're going to want to have, you can, can really only realistically do two in the evening. So if you have six, that's why I said you're looking at three evenings. When you are doing your semifinalist, your top two or three, each of those really needs to have an evening or a set time in and of itself for one, for one candidate, for one semifinalist. So again, you're really looking at three days within a week in which you are available for probably about three and a half to four hours. For each candidate, your first round candidate, you want to give them about an hour and a half. And for your second round candidate, you want to give them about an hour and a half to two hours for the actual interview process and building into that some social time where you may get to meet their spouse or significant other. And again, depending on where we are with COVID, we're recommending that that's a face-to-face, that second round interview. Uh, and depending on, uh, what you determine, you want to utilize in terms of additional community input or feedback. That would be.
Thanks for mentioning that, I, I skipped over that.
Yeah, the second round interview would be when that happens. And it could, again, be an online, um, uh, virtual communication with people who participated in your focus groups. The intent, however, is that one set of community members would only engage with one of your candidates. So again, that gives you an opportunity to have multiple groups, but they would only be interacting with one candidate and then providing the board with feedback about that candidate based on the profile. So you say, here are the things we're looking for. You're gonna have a chance to meet with this candidate, listen to this candidate from, you know, this point to this point, this point to this point. You want your staff to be able to do that. You want your, your, uh, teachers, you want some community people, you want some parent groups to be able to have that opportunity. And again, one of the documents that we share with you or, or, uh, provide as a, as a sample is what that community feedback would look like. The document that people would be asked to complete. And then that information is, is gathered and shared with all of the board members as you are now considering each of those individual candidates. So it sounds a little complicated, it's much easier than it sounds. But that's why you're looking at that window of time that you're going to need where you all can be there. You know, you can't have somebody who's got to go on vacation or who has to do something. It really has to be a, a uniform time with all of you all together to hear all of those candidates and semifinalists.
Uh, so with that said, would anyone have a problem if we're looking at the week of May tenth to do? That would be Zoom interviews for that, if we did two, 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 right?
Yeah.
Um, would you all want to do just ten, eleven, twelve?
So, a couple of things, Sandra has her hand up. Um, and we have finance on the eleventh, we could potentially move. Go ahead Sandra.
I, I have a, I'm pretty sure I have surgery in May.
Oh no.
Well, and I'm, it's all right if I, I mean, I'm not, I, I don't want it to, I certainly don't want it to appear that I, that I don't consider this to be a priority because I certainly do. But I had to wait six months to get this, to get this surgery. Um, and, and I'm think, I thought it was May fifth, but I, I was, that's why I went running out to try to find the documents. And of course, I couldn't find the documents. But I'm sure it was in May and, um, and I'm not even sure, I don't think it's any, I don't think it's going to demobilize me for the whole month of May, uh, um, immobilize me, excuse me. Uh, but I do, I, I, I thought it was May fifth is what I want to say, but, but I, but I don't have that document in my hand right now, so.
If, if it's that first week in May, um, Ms. Seem, do you think that you would be, um, recovered enough to participate in interviews the week of the tenth?
I believe so because I, I, I think it's, it's, uh, I think it's the last, it's amazing how fast they put you out today.
Yeah.
They go in one day and the next day they say, we don't want you here anymore, go home. And that's.
The good news is it's virtual, so you could actually be in a bed.
Right.
Washing and no one would know.
Right, well, that's, that's the other, the other, um, thorny issue for us is that, um, we need to know how much needs to be televised so that we can work with our partners at ETV. Cause it, the public meetings law in New Hampshire says that if, if we're having a public meeting, it needs to be accessible to the public. Um, so anytime we meet publicly, even if the public isn't interacting in the meeting, they still need access to it. Um, so I would believe that the, the, both rounds of interviews would qualify as that, but.
I actually think maybe it might only be the second round.
I think so too.
I think, I think the first round would be, um, uh, like a non, un, un, uh.
Non-public, okay.
Public, and then the second round would be public.
Yeah, Ms. Kinsella is nodding as well. So that makes it easier because, um, then we don't have to worry about meeting in public versus meeting virtually and how to do that.
And if you're, if you're going to engage the public in meeting, um, the, the three final, if there are three, the finalists, um, then it's public anyway. So we would just need to notify the candidates. And they would be, that, that's not atypical, so, but we would definitely let them know. It's less typical with the, um, six individuals.
That's good clarity, Ms. Timmons? Uh, Ms. Timmons, you're on mute.
On the twelfth, I have a study hub. And, um, but I'm usually back home by one o'clock. So if after one. So if after one is okay.
Okay. So Ms. Kinsella, and Ms. Johnson, are we able to move finance so that we could potentially do the 10th, 11th and 12th? Or the 11th, 12th and 13th? I would hate to book us for four nights in such an intense time.
I'm going to check my calendar now. I don't think, I guess we can ask Mr. Donovan because if there's nothing major.
Getting to the end of the season two.
Mr. Donovan, do you think we could change it from the 11th?
Sure.
May?
We could probably find something, sure.
Sure.
All right. So is, does anyone have a preference between which three nights that week? And then if we don't need a third night, that's well.
Well, right now I have, on the 12th, I'm committed.
Okay, so how about the 10th, 11th and 13th?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm assuming these are evening interview, correct? Because we have members who work.
They're according to your schedule, but more often than not, most board members are working also. And so they're in the evening. Yes.
Let's say six-ish because that's the time of our other meetings these days. Okay, so not the 12, wait, not the 12th because Ms. Johnson's not available, but the 10th, 11th and 13th.
Congratulations.
You win the prize. That's the, the shortest amount of time ever.
It didn't take you all 45 minutes to get to that. That's a good thing.
So now if you could decide on the three days, May 17th through the 21st, I hope it goes as easily.
And I'm going to say goodnight.
Thank you, Dr. Howe. I appreciate your time this evening.
Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you as well.
So, oh, wait, excuse me. Sorry, I have kids and dogs. And they were running like it's NASCAR through the side of my, where I am. Okay, the week of the 17th, we have curriculum on Monday and policy on Tuesday. Can we move our, our committee meetings to the first week of the month there? And then open up those nights?
I can work with all of the committee heads, administration and Board of Ed, and try to get those maneuvered around or, since we have so much other work to get done.
Right. May is going to be very challenging. So does anyone have any nights they cannot do the week of the 17th? Sandra? I'm sorry, Ms. Seem?
I just, my date was wrong. It's not the 5th, it's the 21st.
Oh.
Yeah, Wednesday, April 21st, 2021. And it's, it's day, it's outpatient, so it's just that day. So if the, I would assume that even, I, I don't know how to, you know, it's assuming does. But it may be that, that night I would be, you know, on a Zoom. I mean, as she said, people Zoom from bed.
Right. Well, it, it's in April or May, Ms. Seem?
It's saying April, April 20th, you have been scheduled in.
Great. So that means you'll have two weeks to recover before the interviews.
Well, I have other, I, I don't, I'm thinking that none of these, I have two other that I have to have a pre-op and I have to have a post-op kind of thing.
Yep.
But I think, again, I think, I don't think they're going to be time intense. I think they're going to be, in fact, some of them may even be telephone. You know, they do, they do teleconferencing now, which is the darnedest thing, which I prefer actually, by the way. You know, wonderful. They just say, you all right? And hopefully you say, yeah, call me another year. I'd be glad to get it over with, I'll tell you that, but anyway.
All right. So now, now we're looking at May, the week of the 17th. Does anyone have any conflicts tho, those nights? If we can move our committee meetings?
What were the, can you tell me which, what, how many, was it another three evenings?
There would be three candidates, one a day. And then you would need to decide that, not tonight, whether or not you wanted community engagement with regard to that. But it would be three, three days because sometimes the candidates will want to see the schools. They want to see the district and, and we can talk about that later. So you'll need three days. And then in the pre-COVID days, you would generally have dinner with the candidate and whomever the individual brought. And then, so you could have some socialization. And then you would conduct the interview following that, so.
Okay, so.
There's probably a pretty good chance on the 20th, we would have a JSSBC, right?
The 27th.
Oh, it's the 27th, all right.
It's usually the last Thursday of the month.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. My bad.
That's okay. I wrote down the executive committee meetings for the JSSBC on the wrong Wednesday in my calendar, every other Wednesday for the entire year. So that was lovely. Okay, so the week of the 17th, does anyone have a night that does not work for them? Oh my gosh, we're so easy. Do we want to do, are we still going to have, we're not going to have, are we still going to have budget then, Dan?
When?
End of May.
End of May.
I hope not.
Okay, so do we want to do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Bear in mind, you're going to need to decide whether or not, when you're going to get together to decide on the one candidate.
Oh, that's true. So we'll need Monday to do that.
And unless that you feel after the third or how many ever, the last candidate, you want to try to decide. But I would tell you it is helpful if you sleep on it, but not too long that you make a decision. That's why we do these one week and then the next week. So it's fresh in your mind, the, the differences with the candidates. And, but you're going to have to decide on a finalist.
Okay, so we will work on that, whether we can do it.
But if you can get the three interview days down and then mull over how you're going to reach that final decision, if we could get that done, that, that is huge.
Right. And I imagine you need a, a little bit of time to invite them back. So let's say Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the following week. Ms. Kinsella, what do you think? Yeah, anyone else?
18th, 19th and 20th?
Of what month?
May.
I'll be all right. Thank you. Write everything down.
Go ahead, Ms. Giulio.
Um, I'm just thinking that if we need, if we need to interview three finalists and then maybe the night after we sleep on the third finalist interview, we want to make our decision. We should probably interview the people Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, which would leave us with Thursday night to kind of make our decision.
The week of the 10th, unfortunately, Ms. Johnson's not available Wednesday.
No, it's the week of May 17th through the 21st we're looking at.
Hold on, I'm confused now.
May 10th, the week of May 10th are your, your six candidates. Now the next week, you're going to be interviewing three.
Yes, I think Ms. Giulia was suggesting that the week of the 10th, we do our sixth, we, we do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so we can talk. No. But we can't do that.
You'll still need to, you'll still need to make a decision on which six are moving to the next three.
Right, which three, we have to have them.
So we are going to need, we're either going to need to have a meeting on Friday, or I think as Sharon was mentioning, we should decide on, I mean, that doesn't give the candidates a lot of time. Ugh, yeah.
What, what we do is we, when we're interviewing, the week we interview, we tell every single person with whom we interview, would you be available these days? Because that's when the board will be interviewing six. And then will you be available these days? Because that's when they'll be interviewing three. And to make arrangements if they're not, to try to accommodate that.
Okay. All right, so we have to worry about when we nine can get together to decide the, the winnowing of the, the six to three, if we need to have a Friday meeting or, or a Saturday meeting. Nobody wants to meet Friday night or Saturday, I understand, but I don't know how else to do it.
Well, my problem is I work weekends. And my schedule varies, so some, so we're going to do in the morning. In fact, I have to try to get my schedule changed because I usually work Fridays a lot of times as nights.
And we can't get the nine of us together during the day.
So I have a suggestion. What if we had our conversation, to narrow it down? And again, I recognize it's a short amount of time notice to give to the final three. We had that conversation on the 17th and then we have the 18th, 19th, 20th, we have the second round of interviews. That won't work.
That's a lot of time. It's a lot of time between when you just interviewed and waiting four days. That, that is a lot of time.
I don't think it'll work because we don't, again, we'd be stuck. If we don't interview for the round of three, the second round of interviews, if we don't do it the 17th, the 18th and the 19th, with the 20th being the night that we make our decision on our final candidate, then we're in the same situation where we may need to meet on a Friday. And, you know, we're getting very close to, you know, summer. So I, I just think we may have to, we may have to meet on a Friday after we interview the six candidates.
But would it be, would, would, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. And I'm, Sharon, I was wondering for, I'm guessing it's mostly going to apply to Jen and Ray. What would be the earliest in the day you could meet on, like Friday, the 14th? And then Paula, what would be like your stop time? If we were to do a Saturday, like Saturday morning or Friday night?
See, my problem is I don't get my schedule for about two weeks prior too.
So would you usually work like the AM shift though, or the PM shift on a Saturday?
I used to work nights all the time. I used to be the closer, but now they have me all hours of the day. They've shifted me around.
So go ahead, Sharon.
I, I just want to say that we can probably decide on the week of the 17th right now because we can interview if we're down to three candidates or possibly we'll be down to two, who knows? But if we interview them on 17th, on the 18th and the 19th, then that leaves us that Thursday night, the 20th, to make our final decision on who we want to offer the position to. I know we have a problem the week before that where we may end up having to meet on a Friday, but that won't necessarily have to happen the week of May 17th, as long as we interview Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday.
Okay. But I think that's wise, Ms. Giulio. Oh, Ms. Kinsella?
I mean, there is a possibility that you will not have three finalists. You could possibly have two, is that correct?
Yes.
There is possible, but I will caution you. Remember I said people are interviewing you back? That you may have a candidate that says, I'm withdrawing. And you don't want to be left with one candidate, particularly since you haven't delved deeply into, I mean, you, you are, are doing the, the one interview. And the second interview, you can get a whole lot more deep and you may, may change your minds. But people, it doesn't happen very often. But I just need to warn you, somebody could drop out and you do not want to be left looking at one candidate.
Okay, so we already know that, so we already know that it has to be the week of the 17th. We need every night, guys, 6:00 PM every night. The week of the 10th, I would suggest the same thing, except so, somebody said they weren't available on the 12th. That was Paula.
And I'm the 10th.
You can't meet on the 10th of May?
Yeah, on the, I had, well, I can, I have a post-op, uh, May 10th at 10:15 in the morning. It probably will be an hour. It's in Waltham and it's, so I don't know. It depends on what time and how long.
6:00 PM.
Yeah, so I should be able to be back by 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So then the last question that we have is on the 14th. What time can the nine of us get together to vote on which of the, which three of the six we can move forward?
Talking about April 14th, right?
No, May. This is all May.
I can do it anytime, that whole day.
Me as well. That's why I'm putting it out to everybody else.
So can I.
So I know that Mr. Guarino and Ms. Bishop and Ms. Johnson all have work schedules that they have to be cognizant of. So I guess it leaves it up to, to you guys.
I'm available with notice for whatever we want to do.
And I could, I could do the same thing. I could give them notice ahead of time. And so if we meet earlier in the day at 3:00, I can take half a day or something like that.
We have done a noon meeting before, but it lasted all afternoon. Would that work for anyone to do something lunchtime-ish? Ms. Johnson?
Wednesdays, I usually work 11 to 3. That's usually a given.
Right, no, we're talking about Friday, the 14th.
Friday, the 14th. I mean, I haven't, if you tell me, I'll just have to go into work and let them know.
Okay.
On the 14th, you know, to swap it out. They're usually good to me because I'm, I'm always working.
All right. Ray, you were saying three would work?
Yeah, I, I could, I could take the Friday off and have a long weekend. I'll be happy with that.
Right after a weekend of board work. Forever. We might need, we all will need a long weekend.
Okay, would you like to do earlier then? I mean, I think we're, we're really down to.
And we do know.
Really down to Ms. Bishop and her time availability and Ms. Johnson.
Yep, I just have to, it'll be fine.
All right, okay. So let's say noon because that then will give time for Dr. Williams and Dr. Hill to notify the candidates. Okay, so I feel badly for anyone who's decided to watch this entire meeting because the last 20 minutes is just calendars and it's not fun. Okay. Okay, and then Ms. Kinsella will work with administration and the chairs of finance, curriculum and policy to move those meetings somehow, some other time. Best of luck, guys. Okay, were there any other decisions that needed to be made this evening?
You were going to decide the week of the 17th through the 21st. Did you take Sharon's suggestion? I didn't, they did?
I wrote down, I wrote down 6:00 PM every night that week.
So interviews Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then we'll meet Thursday, the 20th to make our decision.
And decision?
Yep. Uh-oh, Ms. Williams is breaking up again.
Will you just send out a little reminder on all those dates to make sure we have them right?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
We, we lost Dr. Williams.
She did freeze.
She did. I wrote it on this lovely calendar that Ms. Kinsella had given us. That now rules my life and, you know.
Sorry, I lost all of you.
Oh, good, you're back.
I am back.
So, so I don't know where we lost you, but we decided 6:00 PM, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday for the decision, the week of the 17th.
Okay.
Does that work?
Very good. That sounds great. These were the most important dates for us. And as I'm looking at the time.
Yes.
Will you, did the, did you want to take some time to look at the entire calendar so we can decide on the other dates in the future? Because these were the most important dates.
I think the other dates regarding focus groups and the like were something that the ad hoc committee could work on because all nine of us. were something that the ad hoc committee could work on, because all nine of us don't need to be there.
I guess I was, um, the one date that we have to look at is the date that we bring the slate of candidates to you. So that we can put that wheel in motion to get the interviews with you scheduled.
Okay. That is the week of, sorry, the week of April 24th?
Um, no, um the uh end of the week of May 3rd. Or no, is that bad?
Uh, that's when I just think we moved all our committee meetings to. Um, the week of May 3rd, uh we have our full board meeting on the 3rd. Um, I suppose any other day right now is open.
Well, could you um, could you go into closed session if your week is really packed and we can come in at the end of your meeting, even though it would be late, I know, to give you?
No. Uh, yes, theoretically you could, no, I don't think it would be um pleasant for anyone to do that, because those meetings tend to be four or five hours long, and we're all
Okay.
Not in our best mental state, especially the people who've been working since 7:00 AM.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Gilio?
What, well, if it has to be sometime the week of May 3rd, why can't we do it Thursday, the 6th?
Weekend.
Is that soon enough to get back to you, Ms. Williams?
That's great, Thursday, the 6th is perfect.
And that wouldn't interfere with our rescheduled um committee meetings.
Perfect.
Who knows, all right, so 6:00 PM again.
Perfect. And then um I can work with the ad hoc committee on the other elements of it, and I know you've had um a lot. And I thank you so much for your time and attention, you did really well getting those dates, honestly, you just won the new world record for setting dates with nine board members, no less, so thank you for that. And um any questions that you have, I know I'll be working and getting to know Stacy and Dana and others very well, and um, you know, any questions that pop up? Um, I know Jessica, you can reach out to me or or anybody, really, and um we'll we'll go from there, but we'll be in contact to get everything else ironed out, too.
Actually, I just had one more question, so I know that we're gonna work with the um superintendent search committee to get our focus groups lined up. Um, are you going to reach out to um in the individual board members and have those conversations?
Yes, Deb and I are going to um work with Tara, actually, and we're gonna give her some days and some timeframes, and then Tara will reach out to you and say, do any of these work, if they don't? Um, we can, we don't have to interview that week, we could, we could actually, from this point on, start interviewing with you, but Tara, it's, we'll probably work with you on that.
Okay, thank you so much, I'm, and thank you, Tara, as always. We appreciate you.
Okay, so um, thank you, Dr. Williams, does anyone have any other questions for Dr. Williams this evening?
If you do, stream them through Tara or um Jessica, we'll be happy to answer them. And you have all those um attachments when you have time to look through them, and you've been very attentive and very helpful, and more details start to unfold, but we didn't want to completely overwhelm you. Um, but hopefully you have a much better idea of how this will unfold and um the collaboration and um the transparency, because honestly, um, just in in closing, I'll just tell you, when you engage your stakeholders, as much as you will be through all these different avenues, and you follow that profile, you're going to have automatic support of the person you select, which is enormous, because that that individual cannot begin with a group of people um not not supporting him or her, so I think um it will be a very, very smooth transition for that individual.
Excellent, right, thank you so much, and so for our next steps, uh Ms. Brown um and the ad hoc committee will try and meet this week um to start working on the focus groups and the other items on your list that you presented to us this evening. Um, so Ms. Brown or Ms. Hines or Ms. Kinsella will be in touch um about that in the next day or two.
Perfect.
All right, great, thank you. All right, is is there any other business before the board this evening? Oh, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's almost. Night, everyone.
Oh, my goodness, good night, Dr. Williams.
Nice meeting you.
All right, so the motion to adjourn was by Ms. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Gilio. Unless you had a question, Ms. Gilio?
No, I'm seconding the motion.
Okay, Ms. Bishop votes yes, Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
We've lost her.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Timmons?
Uh, Ms. Timmons had to leave, she had another Zoom. And now I can't hear you, Ms. Bishop. Ms. Bishop? Is it me? I can't hear you, Jen.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 0 at 8:18 PM.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Everyone, thank you.
Good night.
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 Night.